The Ronny Board of Education meeting is called to order. Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of Public Schools of 1975 and Title of the UPA Public Meetings Act. The time, date, location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by new client retrospect as well as person emphasis in Borough Hall, Ronny Post Office, Mary Holt School, Align Downing School, Grace Downing School, and the Ronny Public School District website. Please rock, it's the United Legion. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Board of members?
Mrs. Garrett, Mrs. Beatty?
Here.
Mr. Buffett?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Mr. Lego?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Ms. Benjrellala? Ms. Sams?
Here.
Ms. Fulton?
Here.
Wait before I move on.
Ms. Benjrellala had other surgery so she's unable to make it with us this evening. Also President Mark Ayuchi Superintendent, Dr. Shaw McCarron VA Supervisor of Curriculum Instruction, Ms. Shade Yezzi Principal of Bingle Downing School, Mr. Steve Healy Principal of Holt School, Mr. Phil Silva Vice Principal of Holt School, Ms. Gladys Hubbard, excuse me, Child Learning Team Supervisor, and Mr. Frank Heine Supervisor of Building and Grants. At this time I need to motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for February 19, 2019. Motion made by Chaz. Segment by Angel. Any questions on the minutes? Roll call.
Mrs. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Buffett?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Lego?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Sams?
Yes.
Ms. Fulton?
Yes.
Mr. Pat.
All right, we have two presentations this evening, but I think that our cheerleaders will trump Mr. Dr. McCarron in our budget presentation. Ms. Ayuchi?
So we have our cheerleaders and our girls' basketball team. Sure to tell us a little bit about their season, a very successful season it was for them. We have Lisa Maye, our girls' basketball coach, and Lauren Even, our cheerleader.
All right, so here to talk about the girls, they had an amazing season, especially coming off of last year when we had 10 eighth graders that left us and we were basically starting from scratch and we had no idea how the season was going to go with never a varsity experience. So it was really a nice surprise and it really is credit to the girls in how hard they worked and how well they came together as a team. I think our record ended up being 11-2, which gave us the division championship. Fortunately we lost in the final championship game, second, but still it was a great season for where we were coming from. This was our team. We have actually a really nice balance this year of our 87th, 6th, and 5th graders, so we kind of have that building going on, which is great for next year. And yeah, I think we have a strong foundation for our next year's group with our eighth graders leaving, because we did have some experience with varsity team with them as well. I love the girls. Kept on my tweets all season. These are our eighth graders who are leaving us this year, or sad to see them go. They were, really had some great leadership this year on the team with our athletes, with Amelia, Kino, Riley Chappell, and Elizabeth Tecky. They really stepped up and did a great job leaving the girls and really setting good examples and working hard. And it's a huge dedication. They're doing your five days a week, they're there for 4:30 every day at the earliest game dates and sometimes maybe until late at 4:00 at night. And they were there all the time, every time they get there, they're there. So that was a huge help to that winning season that we had. So I have here just a couple of clips from the summer male game that we played, which didn't kind of seize the girls in action because they were really fun to coach this year. You'll see that we had pretty much a different person story, I don't want to say everyone used clips. And it was the fact that it wasn't one great player, we had a whole team of great players that came together. Yep. Thank you, they're great for the girls.
And if you put us our cheerleaders?
Yes. So these are three of our eighth grade girls. We have Shawna all the way over on the left, Abby in the middle, and Adriana on the right. They have been, since I started coaching, three years ago, they have been extremely reliable, always coming to practice, ready to work. Shawna is, so they've all actually done all different positions in cheerleading. They're all flown and they're all face backside. Flyers are the ones that go over the air, faces are the ones that hold them, and then backside are the ones that are behind the group to help put the stuffs in the air. Like in Maytag, we did not have any returning eighth graders, they were the only three. So we weren't really sure what was going to happen. We had a huge turnout in class and ended up with 15 eighth graders, which was really cool to see. So we had Thursday, then the question is what's going to happen next year, but I'm confident the same thing is going to happen and that a whole group's going to come again. This year I would say that we had the most talented groups of athletes I've had since I started coaching. They were, individually, they were incredible, they just had to work ethic, I mean, it was really cool to see. They, as a team, it took a little bit of time to like kind of build that relationship. The first competition was a little rough and I think it was a good morale check for them to realize that they needed to come together as a team. Our second competition, even though I have three in the second, they went against six other teams and won first. And that was the fire that they released. Mr. Dr. and I, my assistant coach, talked, we said Thursday before our competition, they came in with this fire in their eyes that I hadn't seen all season and they wanted it. And it was really fun to see them because when we got to the competition, they were like showing off in front of the other teams. There was a time they were in practice and they were throwing out all the stuff they could do to just kind of try to motivate the girls, which I was like, girls, we have to be careful, let's not be cocky because everyone looks stupid at me. But they really had a fun with it and that was really cool to see. And then the third competition, they wanted even more. They came out, they did amazing, they did the best adult football competition that they've done all season. We did get second place to a team that we lost to at the first competition. So they were really a lot closer at the third competition than they were the first competition. They did incredibly, they dropped a single stunt, which is, you know, a huge distraction for the day. They just, they looked great. So I'm going to let the girls actually talk a little bit about the season and then we'll show you our competition. So go ahead, Abby.
I've been cheering since fifth grade and the cheerleading team this year is like my second family. I have a lot of like new friends now, so it's a cheerleading, so, yeah.
Well, this year was one of my favorite years, just because of my eighth grade and I met a lot more people this year coming from fifth graders. And the coaches actually really pushed us through this year, like knowing that we did a few stuff that we're not normally doing, but then after it made us walk way better towards that goal.
Shawna's going to say something? Shawna's going to actually tumble for you guys. She is someone who at every date she'll tumble for us and she's just incredible with her tumble skills, so go ahead. That exhausted entire, oh, I'm sorry. All right, so here's our, this is our second competition. Again, got it actually better than you could imagine for our competition, but I swear it's really, you can tell they wanted it, I was so proud. Is that sound?
It should be.
That was amazing. And even the babies can hear them counting, that just shows like they just wanted it as a team and that was very nice. Thank you guys.
They're both great guys.
Thank you. They are, they're very talented.
Thank you, this is Maytag.
Thank you.
And the girls are coming and talking, we really appreciate it.
No, I think we can't have this. Are any of you generous?
No. All asked. Thanks guys.
Thank you.
So while we're waiting for Dr. McCarron to set up, we'll move on to the next few things. Correspondents, do you have something there?
Yes. On March 5th, I believe, with the National Assessment of Educational Progress, I believe we've helped make select a few eighth grade students, 50, so roughly half our eighth grade population took the test, so they gave us a certain appreciation. We won't specifically find out how much that team did or provided to the public for the state in here, so we'll figure out. Usually they put that stuff out later on in school, so that's our only question at this time.
At this time we are moving for public comments on agenda items only. Does anybody have any comments on agenda item? Yes, this is Kelly.
I see that the eighth grade, I guess, is probably physical in the north once a year.
The band and chorus? I don't know, we approved that back in, back in September.
But you don't remember musical?
I don't remember. Mr. Healy does?
It's kind of the opposite. The reason it was re-approved is because they shut the one, the group for this place, they closed the doors on the deal, so they had to relaunch and move.
New theater?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That is the offer?
Yeah.
Wow.
Okay, any other questions on agenda items at this time? Superintendent's report.
District enrollment, personal study, 42, six out of the replacements. We did have a two second visit, if you put that in my meeting, we'll update it to you. Most of the components were completed, the two areas, the pantry, outdoor, personnel, person charged back to all available that day to do it, as well as the site walkthroughs. I believe they were walking through Downing as well as Holt's, that will also be rescheduled at a later date. We won't provide information for assuming several months, Dr. McCarron didn't really give us the update, one's going down to a half, so hopefully they can get some information.
I think, I think it went well, they got here at nine o'clock in the morning, they were here most of the day. It seems that it will be sold from the out, I think. Dylan's going to file, whatever else, ask us questions. Thank you to Mr. Murray, he was the, he was voluntold to participate in that board member interview process. We tried to switch that up with these things, I saw you already served in active capacity, so I don't want to end you with that again. And all, I guess he asked you a series of questions that he was easily able to answer. Don't forget kindergarten orientation, for those of you who don't, most people are students in kindergarten, or excuse me, competition next year, those orientations, everything's posted on the website at the end of May, I believe, 28th of May, the area of Downing. Also preschool lottery takes place Thursday in the Holt's library. I think Mr. Cleveland is conducting that lottery situation. I'm not sure Mrs. Mark, how many of you have registered for that?
Twenty.
Twenty-eight or?
How many spots we have? For three spots?
That is twenty, or twenty-three.
For twenty, twenty, for twenty-three spots.
So we have four, we have a waiting list every year, proportionate to what's likely to be, they are, things do happen, so if people are on the waiting list, you know, but it has a still possibility of happening. As of now, we still don't have any for a preschool floor lottery at this time, but it has been, was registered, we don't have this. Some program is being planned right now, I know it's only the opening day, but we have to get all the information out of the parents, we'll get them out in April. We're all starting that up a week or so after school ends, now we run it through roughly about the third week in, in August, in August, and again, taking place mostly at Holt's School. Board of, I have speaking to some of you through email, they also spoke to Mrs. Fulton last week regarding board office space. We have, you know, had continued conversations with the borough, to take a look at their second floor, which we need to get, because we don't, it'll free up some space at Holt's School to accommodate our two new preschool classrooms that are being added. So we had discussed second floor toward the borough, so we're trying to work out some logistic, we're still something that may be done for that to be kind of move in ready. But we've met three or four times, there's a possibility we'll go back over there this week, and then we'll be there for the one week, so we'll keep you updated on that. The budget that Dr. McCarron presented to you will be submitted to the county office tomorrow, and hopefully we get that back for our next meeting in April. Any questions that have been done will be included in that presentation, but usually for some foggy, we're pretty familiar with that. Remember I overgrated, I told you that meetings can't be planned in March, it's been rescheduled for April 30th. Dr. McCarron has also been volunteered to take my place at that, because I will be serving on jury duty that day, and I'm unable to do that directly from jury duty. So I have eight, oh. Fourth is serving by civic duty. Big questions in that committee is civics, financial literacy, and dance requirements, also something they looked at in the Q site visit last week. I have Dr. McCarron, he has a dance certificate, he holds so many, our certificates, he does not, that's one of the things I'll mention that, it's incorporating more of his auditions into the curriculum, it's also incorporating more things in the STEM, very close, but in line with also social studies. Finally, thank you for those of you who came out Saturday, we should have Mrs. Maytag made some practices next year for teachers for basketball, because we could, we needed it. But we just gave them the kind of impression for the same day, unless I don't want to play volleyball coaches and lack experience for a basketball year time. Thank you for Mr. Silver, supporting us with our points. It's glad it was a good day, we were able to get our new staff, we have six baskets to call us, some of our staff members, you know, happened to have today, that day, it would be a great job, just happy to play. But we're going to have to win it in the coming, so.
Thank you. Were you ready for us now?
Ready. Um, okay, so for the 1920 budget, we present the budget two times. So the first time we present it is for approval by the Board of Education, for us to submit the budget to the County Office of Education. The county office then reviews the budget to make sure that all things required are included within the budget and that we've accomplished all of those things and we look to accomplish those things in the upcoming school year. Should any changes be required, and that could be from the county superintendent, the county educational specialist, the county supervisor, special education, special services, they then send individual dialogues back and forth between myself, the administrators, so that way we can make those changes. Those changes then get re-presented during the 10-day window we have to present the budget to the public, which is why our April meeting is not on the normal day it is, but it's on Tuesday, April 30th, because that falls within that window of when we're allowed to have a final approval on our budget. In most situations, our budget does not require changes at the county level that have to then be re-approved by the board. So this is for the 1920 school year. So one process, and during our Q second process, they want to, this is the type of stuff they want to say. They want to say, at what point in time did you present to the public your budget development and timelines? When was it presented to administration? When was it presented to your Board of Education? And when did you present it to the public? We present this every year, the more in budget time, so if you're asking yourself, you've seen me now for five years, reported on the same thing, this is the reason why, because it's one of those compliance factors that what we're firing in to be transparent is possible with delay and which were budgeting. So in October, we start needing, so as this school year begins, we're already needing this, administrators to identify budget needs for the next school year. We start identifying those needs and what processes we're going to go through. Many times the larger items might be change in curriculum, if we want to purchase new programs, if we want to update our science labs, or you know, change our computer labs as a whole, if we're looking to purchase new technology, those are really the main things that we're talking about. Mr. Heinzel always has the largest, largest projects in mind, like facilities and maintenance, so. Then between October and December, building principals and our departments work with their staff to identify any needs that might have been addressed. In January, the principal and department budgets are submitted to myself and Mr. Ay and he, and we review those budgets. And as a small district, we're able to review those as a team, so we will review those as a group. In February, I begin constructing the budget to determine what financial impact it might have and see whether it fit for mandates. And then also, we're always waiting until February, beginning of March for the governor's address. My numbers don't actually populate in the budget software until 48 hours after the governor's address. So whenever you hear the governor's address is taking place, I'm anxiously awaiting to find out what numbers we're getting. Are we getting more money for security? Are we getting more money in this area? Where are we with preschool aid? Those types of things. In March, we have, which is what we're doing right now, is our tentative budget presentation for board review, and then we submit it to the county office, which happens to be tomorrow. Then April 30th, we'll do our public hearing of the budget. Between then and April 30th, we have to advertise the budget to the public. So I think it's about 27 pages that get shrunk down, it goes in the retrospect, and they then, we have to post it, so that way the public has a chance to review the public document, and then that way during the public hearing, they can come and ask any questions that they might have. But as always, if anyone has any questions, you can also feel free to reach out to me and I'd be more than happy to answer that. Considerations that we take into when developing a budget. Small district educational goals, so every year in August, we're establishing what goals we have, where are we going to see the district going, where are we going to see our schools going, and what financial needs there are within achieving those goals. We look for community supportive feedback that we receive, whether it be through Board of Education meetings, whether it be at public events. We look at our enrollment. Ronny's been very lucky over the past 15 years to have extended enrollment. Our enrollments actually increased a little bit, and that's because of the preschool enrollment that we're now receiving through the pre-K funding that we're getting for the expansion. Anticipated revenue, and that's the money we anticipate coming into the district. So half of our budget is supported by local tax levying, the other half of the budget is supported by the government through different grants and federal money that we receive. Mandated regulations as far as things that have to be implemented, so for example, a law just passed the other day that all schools need to have emergency panic buttons installed in their main offices, so that way if there's an emergency, a button can be pushed and it goes directly to police or fire department. It happened to be on the same day we were having the emergency buttons installed in all three schools, that that mandate actually came out, so we were a little bit ahead of the perp. But when those things happen, that then has to be budgeted for in the following budget to make sure that we're able to accommodate those needs. And then of course, upcoming costs and needs. So usually throughout February, March, we'll find out where we are with health insurance, as far as what the rate increase is going to be, our contracts that we have each year, whether it be for addition replacements. We didn't get that. Oh, that's correct.
Everybody got it.
We need to. Um, so we're also just looking at those upcoming costs and needs and making sure that whatever increases there are in the costs that we have as a district, that we're going to, that we accommodate that within our budget and that it's able to be set. One thing that I always, school budgets are very unique in and of themselves, once a budget is approved in April, it's pretty much locked in. You have very little wiggle room unless there is a huge emergency that requires someone within the budget to change or to be modified. And if you do need that, you need county approval and also state approval to have those things take place, because as a public school district, it's the presentation to the public and they want to make sure that whatever is approved is what is followed through with. So for revenues, the top part is our local tax levying. You can say that for the 1920 school year, our local tax levying will be $7,466, I'm sorry, $466,456. That's $146,401 more than it was last year. That is, that remains at the 2% cap. In the past, in years past, if anything, or actually currently, if anything's over 2%, that has to actually be voted on by the public. If it is 2% or less, it does not have to be voted on by the public. If the 2% is not taken, that money can go into what they call banked cap, which means that the school district doesn't use it in year one, or they don't have to use it in year two. However, in year three, the school district is then able to take out 6% in one month sum without the public approval, because it's banked up to those three years. So 2% is what we're increasing the budget for this year. In terms of revenues, that's money that we have coming into the district. You can see that last year in 2018, 2019, our revenues coming into the district were $1.2 million of that money was our capital reserves. That's the money that when we end our budget in June, we want to make sure that we have money that we are able to put into our reserve accounts, whether that be capital reserves or maintenance reserves. So when large projects need to take place within the district, or we have large things that need to happen, we have the money to do that. So that might be replaced in our HVAC units, doing flooring projects. Cafeteria, when we had to, when we changed the cafeteria bowls, so that way we're able to serve all meals out of bowls for the entire district, that all came under our capital reserve account. Maintenance is more of our general updates that we're doing, whether that be different supplies or things required for regular maintenance throughout the school year to keep our facilities updated and current. This year in 1920, our revenues as far as the money that are coming in is $60,458,284. It's important to remember that the money that we have coming in, 800,000 of that, is from our capital reserve account that we're bringing in to do various projects. Bingle Downing has some masonry work that needs to be done on the outside, but that's extremely costly. We're converting some of our classrooms currently, not currently, our office spaces that we have currently into classrooms, and we're making sure that those are equipped with bathrooms, because per code, that's required for a preschool classroom, that there's a bathroom located in there. In addition to that, it's important to remember that of 900,000 of that, money, close to a million, is coming from the preschool expansion grant that we're receiving. So that's considered one of the revenues as far as money that's coming in to the district. For the tax levying, so our anticipated tax levying for the 1920 budget, as I had stated, is $7,466,456. The tax rate, so the information, this information I actually get from our borough, so from Giudiorio and from Joyce Pinto over at Borough Hall, they provide me with what the tax rate is. So in 2018, our tax rate was 1.445. In 2019, the tax rate was 1.473. So it's an increase of 0.028, or 2.8 cents, from the 18th school year to the 19th. The tax rate increase within this budget is 2.8 cents on a house. The tax rate increase within this budget is two point eight cents on a house, I'm sorry. So, I'm sorry, two point eight cents, so on a house valued at one hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and three dollars, that's four dollars and forty cents increase per month. So the average home in Running is one hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and three dollars, that's the average of the validation. So on that average home, they will see a four dollars and forty cent increase per month within this budget. So what's in this budget? Our main goal is to maintain all services and all initiatives that we currently have in place. We have, over the years, we've added a lot of programming, we've added a lot of resources for our students, and our goal is to make sure that we're maintaining that and making sure that we're living up to that same value. Increasing and updating technology throughout all grade levels within the district. Currently, we have one-to-one technology in grades two to eight. All of our teachers and instructional staff members also have a device that they use. And then within our elementary schools, we are looking at our current labs, because we still have, we have outdated labs currently, so we're looking at how we can increase that technology by providing touch Chromebooks and updating that environment to make it more current and up to date. Updates to school facilities, we're looking at security renovations, we're always looking to see what we can do. Mark just stated that we have the memorandum of agreement signing. That's a sign between the school district and the municipal, the police department and fire DMS, as far as how we work together on things, so we're continually having those resources. We have also worked throughout all three buildings currently to identify what needs the school has and where we should be investing money as for the district. We are creating two classrooms. You'll see in the agenda tonight, it says approval for our architect to submit to the state approval for creation of four classrooms. The reason why it says four classrooms is because the two classrooms we're currently using will also be having minor work done to ensure that the bathroom facilities are up to code as per the pre-K regulations. So that's where the four classrooms come from. The two additional for next year, plus the two current that we have in place as of January. HVAC upgrades, we're constantly looking at our heating, ventilation, air conditioning throughout all three buildings to make sure that we're being as energy efficient as possible and to make sure that any necessary updates to those systems are done, so that way our schools continue running well. Flooring projects, in certain areas, we're removing carpeting from classrooms and replacing it with VCT tile, and just making sure that we're removing that. A couple of issues that we fell into is the fact that we realized that some of the flooring that we have is asbestos, which means that it's not awful, however, it just means that in order to remove it, the students shouldn't be in the buildings. We have to take care of everything properly, it has to be monitored, so it's just a longer part of the process, which is why it takes a little bit longer for us to do. And then also, as I had stated, masonry work on the outside of the buildings, up Bingham Downey, just to make sure that all around the windows and everything like that is being taken care of. You'll actually see that we have, I think it's over Spring Break, Frank, are they coming down? Over Spring Break, we have a company coming out to, they'll be putting up scaffolding around Bingham Downey, and we'll be doing pressure testing, so that way we're able to identify what areas actually need work done. So we're not looking to redo the entire building, so we're looking to take care of any issues or areas that are of concern before we actually make that investment and have that work done. Outdoor improvements, playgrounds and learning areas, hopefully by the end of the year, we will have the playground up and going over at vaults in the main area that we'll stay right behind the soccer fields. Also, at vaults in the courtyard, if you, we have a courtyard which is outside our pre-K classrooms, that's actually being redone a little bit for our preschoolers to play in, and there will be a few activities and different play areas for them there. Since we are up to six classrooms next year, we, you know, playing time, outside play time is a large part of the schedule, and we can't necessarily have all the students in the same area, so we kind of have it broken up into zones as far as where they can go and where they can play, so that way it's a mixture of different locations that they'll be going. Maintaining support advances to the educational and educational programs within the district, just to name a few, our food service program. For the past four years, I want to say, the general budget has not supported the food service program at all. And this year, with us taking over food service completely, we don't have money coming from the food service program, but they've covered all of their costs, and they will end the year with money to start off with, so the district does not have to support any upfront cost for our food service program. So our food service staff has done a phenomenal job in doing all of that and pushing our deals as much as possible. And then we have transportation, we have our large bus and our small bus. And the change last year of changing our preschool times, we were able to eliminate all transportation costs for after-school activities. So any tricks that we have to do to other schools for sports, we're actually able to cover that on our own. Oftentimes still, we have the large bus and the small bus available throughout the school day, so if the music department wants to run some house to, you know, present, or they, we want to do students a month over at the Philly Town Hall, in the past, we used to have to purchase, but we used to have to rent the bus out for that time period, and we no longer have to do that. In addition, we've also been able to bring some money into the district, because other schools will reach out to us to see if our bus is available, whether it be for weekend trips. Black Horse Pipe uses our buses often on the weekend for trips that they're able to take their students on, and we're able to provide a lower cost than they would normally get by going to outside companies. So we're actually able to help out other districts. Now, Efrim, I think, is getting approved today for using our bus for the Battle of the Hook Street, so it's all those little things that are generating revenue within the district. And then our before and after care program, which has been a huge success, our cost for before and after care during the school year is pretty average to what other before and after care programs run. Our summer program cost is much lower than those summer programs that you would say, offering six forty-five a day to six o'clock P M care for parents over the time period. And one of the reasons why we're able to keep that program so well is due to the fact of the money that we generate over the course of the school year. In addition to that, before and after care is charged by the school district for using the facility, so it's kind of like, because it's an outside, it's an outside business that the school district runs, but we charge them and they bring money into our budget each year. So this year, there, before and after care is bringing seventy-five thousand dollars into the budget. In the past, we've done things like playgrounds, and added different things that are able to then help enhance our overall program and school facilities. Sorry about that. This is, this, um, this is smaller, but this kind just goes over two thousand and thirteen to present as far as what has happened throughout the district. So in terms of personnel, that's been added, all of those things. The highlighted areas, we have a lot going on right now that we're looking to maintain and keep. The main areas that we have changing are highlighted, and a large part of that is going to be our preschool expansion. We started the preschool program, we hit the ground running, we have great things in place, but there's still a lot of work that we have to do. As we add the two additional classes, we have all the curriculums in place, but we haven't started from September first through June. So we're still doing a lot of trainings on the assessment pieces, on the curriculums. The students are currently utilizing the curriculums and assessments, but there's still additional training that our staff will be receiving. So next year, we will be hiring teachers and aides for the preschool additional classrooms that we have. In addition, we will be focusing on our curriculum and assessments for pre-K. And then in addition to that, for maintenance, we have the things that were discussed taking place, such as the masonry, the flooring, the room conversion, and all of those additional Questions from the board?
I have a question. You said capital reserve, one point something million.
One point two, that was last year.
Yep.
Of that one point two.
Yes.
Any money that is not used for capital projects? So one point two, if you remember last year, we had to go out for bid for the work that we were doing. The very last minute, the person who was awarded the bid hacked out of the project due to a work book they got from a steel company. So we had to revise our procedure. Instead of doing renovations, the Bingham's cafeteria area, Downing's cafeteria area, and Volt's, we simply focused our attention on vaults. We used a company that was under state contract, which means we did not have to go out to bid, because they were already validated through state contract, and we honestly didn't have the time to go out to bid, to get work revoked, to have everything in place to do that job. So the money that was not spent in that project for one point two three, we're returning, I think, about two hundred and fifteen thousand. By statute, we have to return that money to capital reserves, so it goes back into the pot. So when we use money now for capital reserve projects for this upcoming year, the money we returned this year is a part of that total. Does that exist?
Any other questions for Dr. McHarr? No?
Not this morning, no.
Okay. Angel? Dan?
I guess it's hard for me to say.
There's no questions from the board at this time. Thank you.
Do you have any questions on the agenda?
We will. So, district reports, principals' reports are attached, nurses, building grounds, and special education reports. Does anyone have any question on the other reports that were attached? No? Okay, so then we can move on to other reports. I will say that the piece for the PTA that will be asked at auction is May tenth this year. If you can come out, like I always do, I'll be asking the board to donate something so we can get a big ticket item. That's May tenth, so I'll show you guys an email for our April thirtieth meeting. Committee reports, does anyone have anything there?
Yes. This month, at the Zonia Plaid Board, they announced that they had to meet with the public a month before for any questions that they had. They submitted their reorganization plan for the Black Horse Pipe to the state. We're not quite sure how long that, we'll take it for the meeting, the information back, but it's been submitted. The only action that was taken by the Zonia Board is re-order rights that was on the Black Horse Pipe, and is relocated and will be opening in May or up into this road right across from Belmore Collision. They just felt that it was a much safer environment for children rather than crossing the Black Horse Pipe.
Where the old house party is. You know where Tomlin Farm two three?
Yes.
Across the street there.
So that was the only items on the agenda for the Zonia Board meeting. At Camden County Education Services Commission, they had been asked by the Girl Scouts of Camden County if the commission would help them do some type of advertising to increase the number of young ladies that are participating in the Girl Scouts of America, so they agreed to do that. The only thing they said was there was a bill in Trenton, a bill, you may want to write this down, Bill thirty-three ninety-five. It would probably go in for vote sometime in the spring, summer, fall, and they asked that we call our legislators to tell them not to support the bill. If this bill's approved, it would give unions in this whole district some power over people the district hires. And they believe that the hiring of personnel is the job that the administration should be doing completely. And also adhering to any contracts, obviously, you know, but, so we were all asked to bring that back to the board, and that's the sub bill thirty-three ninety-five. And that's all I have, the present.
Thank you. Anything else from the school boards?
We just have two things. The board of directors met on five seventeen, and we discussed social media in our school districts. And it was an open forum conversation, and I gave several examples about our district and how positive it is for the parents and grandparents to be able to log on Facebook and see their bright smiles and all the fun things they're doing on social media. So we had that conversation. And the other thing they wanted to push for school districts is that this year is the highest amount of applications they have for the steam tank. I think it's over five hundred districts have applied.
That's good, because they were struggling.
They have to boil it down to a certain amount.
We have three teams going from Running Friday. So the students are coming in, because it's professional development day for teachers, the students are coming in on that day off to go to the competition with Mr. Bonora, and there's three teams coming in there on that day.
And the last thing was, the convention, they're asking any district that wants to present any type of workshop or classroom or kids-centered curriculum, that they would have that invited on January, on April twenty-sixth. Like if we wanted to present something as a district, something that works well, best practices that we use, something interesting, innovative, I stand my scheme, that it would be invited April twenty-sixth.
Thank you. And to piggyback off your conversation from Friday, we all, we just started an Instagram page, Running Schools, right?
Yeah.
You have an Instagram. We're not talking to you, Mr. I U. But it's really popular for the kids, too. I know at Black Horse Pipe, we started like a student body one, and they post something every day. Like, so like, come out to a fundraiser, or look at the musical rehearsing, and it's just like, not a lot of students use Facebook anymore, that's for us old people.
That's what I heard.
So now we're keeping up with the trend and started the Running Schools Instagram page. I know Mr. I U. is really excited to see what he has to do. It's pictures, which I love, so I love it.
Miss Guazi is promoting herself as a district social media specialist.
You can, you can help out the fellow.
Absolutely, I can try.
I guess that makes me a recording secretary.
Does anyone else have anything to add? Negotiation is coming along. Progress? Progress. All right, great, thank you. So if no one has anything else, then we will start with our new business. Under property and transportation, I need a motion to approve items numbers one to three, please. Motion made by Chad. Seconded by Naomi. Any questions? Role call.
Mrs. Derrick?
Yes.
Ms. Beebe?
Yes.
Ms. Shubhan?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Shalago?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Sams?
Under personnel, I need a motion to approve items numbers one through five.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Angel.
Seconded.
Seconded by Naomi.
With regret.
Any, yeah, any, any questions there? Role call.
Mrs. Derrick?
Yes.
Ms. Beebe?
Yes.
Ms. Shubhan?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Shalago?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Saldman?
Yes. So please send our gratitude and appreciation to, and well wishes to Mrs. Shane, Mrs. Sins, and the singles of our school district and our community, so we wish them the best. Under finance, I need a motion to approve item number one through, oh, thirteen. One to thirteen.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Dennis.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Dan. The only thing that was added was course reimbursement, Dan.
And just so you know, you might think the agenda looks a little different. We used to approve financial report up top through our, through our Q-Sec visit, they stated that it was just double approving things, so we could actually combine, so they suggested that we just take the wording and move that to number one, and it still covers all the approvals that are required for the finances each one.
Does anybody have any questions there? Role call.
Mrs. Derrick?
Yes.
Ms. Beebe?
Yes.
Ms. Shubhan?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Shalago?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Saldman?
Yes.
Ms. Pasis.
Under curriculum, I need a motion to approve items numbers one through six. Motion made by Patty. Seconded by Angel. Any questions? Role call.
Mrs. Derrick?
Yes.
Ms. Beebe?
Yes.
Ms. Shubhan?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Leggo?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Baldwin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Policy and policy relations, we have a bunch of policies for the second meeting. So I need a motion to approve items numbers one through five.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion made by Dan, seconded by Patty. Quickly on there, Patty. Any questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Derrick?
Yes.
Ms. Beevy?
Yes.
Mr. Ruffin?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Leggo?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Baldwin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
At this time, we are open for public comments on non-agenda items. The public is reminded that they should attempt to resolve problems and their complaints through initial contact with the staff member and members involved therein and the chief school administrator prior to petitioning the Board of Education. Complaints should only be brought to the Board after the appropriate school staff has had a reasonable opportunity to resolve the problem at the employee level. Statements should be limited in length to three minutes. The public is reminded that all public complaints against a district employee must be made for a specific grievance process. A description of this process may be found in Board of Education Policy File Code 0167. The policy is available upon request in the office of the Board Secretary, who is Dr. McCarron. Any individual naming an employee and complaining before the Board of Education without the employee's permission could be cited for violating that employee's civil and contractual rights. At this time, is there any public comment? Mrs. Kelly?
Eleanor Kelly, 161 Morris Avenue. Tomorrow night is a meeting that is being hosted by the mayors of Camden County. It has to do with the new cannabis laws that are going to be put before the legislature next week. So if you're interested in finding out what this means to us and to our communities, I suggest you be at Sterling High School at 6:30 tomorrow evening, and you'll hear it first from the mayors, and there will be a panel, and afterwards, questions and answers. So it's something very important that I think we should all be aware of. 6:30 tomorrow night at Sterling High School.
Oh, so it's the panel of mayors, or is there anybody else?
There will be others. There'll be professionals. You'll hear from both sides. You know, there's a lot of controversy. Just come, be informed. It's important that you be informed, especially leaders, because people will be asking you questions, and you want to know the answers, you want to be able to help them, or point them to people who can give those answers. So it's my suggestion, if you're scrolling the ten.
At 6:30?
6:30 tomorrow night, Sterling High School, February 11th.
If you could, could you pick up a few extra reports? Because I have appointments tomorrow evening, so I can't make it.
But I'm materials.
Yeah, so is that even, so can you grab an extra report, please?
Sure. I'll, I'll.
Thank you.
New Mayor Council is starting. We're working on the item very, Mr. Billy, it's not quite formed yet. But this year, we're going to be going to the Battleship, New Jersey, for a tour. And we'll be going to Trenton, to the State House. We'll be visiting the State Police Museum, and also going down to the complex in Belton, Lakeland. And we'll be visiting the Green Houses and the sustainability that's being used and adopted by Camden County Threatful County. And then we will go to the Homeward Bound Pet Adoption Center, newly named, and the young people enjoy visiting with the pets there with the shepherd. So it's going to be a busy week. And we'll have open ceremonies, and then after the ceremonies, on Saturday, they'll have pizza. And then at the very end, on Saturday, the A P, they will have a dinner at the Illinois Children's Hospital.
Is, when is that? What month?
It's May 11th.
May 11th is the opening ceremony?
Yes.
At Borough Hall?
And that's, that's a Saturday.
Mm-hmm.
And then I think it's the next.
The next Saturday, 5:18?
It's closing.
Closing.
And ceremonies start at 6:00. At 5:30, I have a reversal with the young people so that they're able to perform. It's not quite as easy as it looks, and so the young people really, they're, they're good. They can get up right. So, and that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, is there any other public comment? Your name and address, please?
Committee Ryan, E11, Preston Avenue.
Hi. Hi, okay. I just wanted to let you guys know about some concerns I have at Bingham. I have two children there. On February 26th, there was a fire drill. Actually, I'm sorry, there was an, there was an actual fire, and the students were put into a shelter in place. And I wasn't happy with the response I received from the school. I believe we should have been an evacuation drill. And that is not the first incident that's occurred. So this is like the second time in less than a year that there's been a breakdown in protocol. My concerns are, who was in charge when this was going on? And as opposed to a small fire, that it was contained quickly, but the fire department was called. So, you know, if the fire department's called, then the children should be evacuated from the building. They shouldn't be put into a shelter in place.
So are you, so I, I wasn't receiving your email, Mr. Ryan. I did not share your email with the entire board because, like I said in your response to you, that I wanted to go to take that email to the superintendent, Mr. Ryan Ute, to try and get to the bottom of the situation. But when I went back and rewrote your email, it wasn't like a clear question that you had in the email. You gave me very specific events that you had a problem with, and, and, and I told you that safety as a, the whole board is our top priority for your children and all the children here in this town. So that's why I was writing, while you were speaking, because I wanted to know, like, what you, you have a specific question about, like, to, you did ask a question tonight, and I will get the answer to that question and get back.
I just want to know why there's continued breakdowns in protocol.
And just so the board is aware, you did follow the proper, the proper procedure, and so you have met, you've dealt to the builder level.
Right, all the way up, just so you guys are aware.
I think, they're, they're not aware.
Sure.
With your information, can I forward that email?
Sure.
And will you give me a few days to, to see to my menstruation and get back to you? I appreciate that. I'll, I'll get your, get your questions answered for you.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. At this time, is there any public, any other public comment at this time? All right. Well, our next meeting is pushed back a little bit until April 30th, 2019. It is at Old School, and it's our public hearing on the budget. What time is that going to start? Is that a regular start time? So 7:00 PM start time. Does anybody have any other questions?
Any other concerns?
Patty, see me before you go, I'm going to sign a part for one of our students.
So there's no idea, a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Naomi.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Chaz. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have a meaning term.